Call this meeting to order and ask that we arise for the pledge of allegiance. And Mr. Kylie, if you'd lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right then. First up is item three, and this is for information only. Item one, the Economic Development Commission. Maureen Abrahamson, Democrat, from 278 Woodhouse Road, for a term of 1113 to 1118, has resigned, and that date was February 1st, 2018. Item two, Flood and Erosion Control Board. Mary Susan Hunt, Democrat, 24 Fairfield Beach Road, for a term of 1116 to 1121, has resigned, and resignation date was May 1st, 2018. And lastly, Parks and Rec Commission. Brian Thompson, Republican, 137 Elm Street, for a term of 1116 to 1121, has a resignation date of April 25th, 2018. Next up, item four, appointments. To hear, consider, and act upon an appointment to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. Michael Allen, Republican, 29 Northfield Road, for a term of 1117 to 1121, and this is to fill a vacancy for Donald Hyman, whose term expired. May I have a motion to accept?
Any motion.
A second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on behalf of the board?
Just quickly, Mr. Allen is here. He's a great candidate. We spent a few moments on the phone yesterday. He's got a great marketing background, a big interest in biking and pedestrian path improvements, and thank you for stepping up to serve.
I biked here today.
There you go.
Mr. Timmy.
I'm a biking enthusiast, belongs on the biking and pedestrian committee, so I appreciate your willingness to step up and support the town.
Sure.
All right, and I concur with my colleagues. We had a great conversation. I want to thank you for that, and also thank you for your interest and volunteer spirit in joining us and joining the Bike and Pedestrian Committee. Any comments from the public? Seeing none. Any comments from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
And just to cover, you still need to be officially sworn in by the town clerk or another appropriate person, so please contact Kathleen Griffin over at my office, and she'll help you arrange that.
Great.
All right, next up, from the assessor, hear an update on senior and disabled tax relief. Mr. Murray, come on up. Please introduce yourself and fill us in a little bit here.
Good afternoon. Ross Murray, I'm the tax assessor for Fairfield. I'm just going to give you an update, an overview on the senior and elderly disabled tax relief program. We offer two. The first is the state, which is offered throughout the, every town has to offer that. Income levels for the state program run from seventeen, run from up to $43,000, and the benefit can range anywhere from $150 to $1,250. The town offers an additional program. Our income ranges go up to $73,600, and we offer three programs. One is a credit, which directly reduces your tax bill, and that dollar, the dollar amount can range from, it's a percentage base, so it can run anywhere from around $1,400 all the way up to a max of $5,000. We offer a freeze program. The income is a little lower on that. It's a max of $53,300, and currently we have no one taking that option. It has a maximum life of six years, so after being on it for six years, you must select either the credit program or the deferral, which is our third offering. The deferral program has a higher income limit. It goes up to $84,300, and you can defer a percent of your tax bill, but that program does have to be repaid, and there is an interest charge, which is about 3 percent. It varies each year. We take applications from February 1st through May 15th, so the end of the program is fast approaching. It's next Tuesday is the last day for us to accept applications.
Okay, and I think one of the reasons we had you here today is recognizing that that end date was May 15th. We wanted to make sure we did everything we could to get the word out to anybody who might be interested or might be eligible, that May 15th is the final day to apply.
Correct. That is it. Right, and we've put notices out, we've used the senior center's email list and put a note out through them. We've also sent reminders out for those that are already on the program that hadn't come back in, and it was close to 200 notices that went out in the last, in the last week. We've taken 323 applications on the state side and 620 on the town side. You only have to renew every other year, so that's about half the population each year.
Is that for both the state and the town to renew every other year?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. Both programs are by annual renewal.
Okay.
We still have about 130 to come in. We were close to 200 about a week ago, so it's coming down, they're coming in, but it's getting down to the wire. We have about 1,358 on the program right now. That includes the 130 that haven't come in, so hopefully most of those will come in. Typically, we see between 30 and 40 that just don't come back in for reasons on, either they moved or they're in a nursing home, moved in with a family member. We just, those folks, we don't, we don't know what happened to them. And finally, last year, the program, the state cost us about $414,000. The benefit that was provided was total of $414,000. This year, we're looking, we'd expect it to cost about $385. On the town side, it'll probably be close to $3.5 million, down about, predicting down about $100,000 from 3.6 last year.
Okay, well, quickly, on the state program, that's where the state basically stripped away the funding, so the town was left to pick up the entire tab on that.
Correct. The state, the state took away the funding portion of the statute and left the requirement in place.
So that, and the numbers you referenced, I believe, reference the property tax credit.
Yes.
There's also a rental reimbursement program as part of the state approach, and they took away half the funding.
Right. That program's about to start up. That starts after the elderly program, the homeowner program ends.
Okay.
And that'll run through the summer into the fall.
Okay, and basically, we're on the hook for paying half of that, if I remember correctly.
On the renters?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Sorry, I didn't mean, I just wanted to jump in and clarify that. Any questions from my colleagues?
I've heard the renters is coming off. This sounds like they're responsible for paying half of that. Latest news out of the state.
Good. Hopefully, though, you know, up until last October, we weren't responsible for paying half of it either, so.
Exactly.
Yeah, I just, my point there was that because the state programs were highly publicized about the state not funding them, I want to make sure the seniors in our town knew that the town was funding them, that there wasn't any question about that.
Right, and we're continuing the programs regardless of the funding.
Right. And then on the, our normal programs, we're looking to make sure they fill out. The RTM at this point has also gone back looking at modifications to that, if I understand it, and they're going to try and have those in place for next year?
Yes. The RTM, or the Tax Relief Committee of the RTM is doing a pretty thorough review of the program and looking pretty much at all aspects of it right now.
So there are no changes to the program this year, so it's the same as last year?
Right.
Next year, the RTM may make some modifications, so everybody should stay tuned to that.
Correct. Stay tuned. We'll publicize it, and hopefully, we're looking to do a mailer for next year, early in the, or the beginning of the program.
Okay, very good. Ross, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess the takeaway is, for those of you watching at home, you have one week to apply if you're interested.
If I might. Next item up, from the Strategic Plan Committee, to hear an update from the Strategic Plan Committee. Mr. Nguyen, if you would both introduce yourself and fill us in.
Certainly. My name is John Nguyen. I'm serving as chair of the Strategic Plan Committee. Thank you for having me back to present some information and an update. I'm joined by Marlene Batista, who's our secretary. The vice chair couldn't make it this afternoon, but he's regularly involved in our meetings. I've prepared a quarterly update for you. It's 17 pages, although I only need to go through 10 pages. The remaining seven pages are the appendices. I have it here, so that's a complete package, but if you have any questions in that material, certainly, I'd be happy to go through that with you. If we look at page two of the material, just listen to the topics we're going to cover. The introduction, executive summary of recent activities, an overview of the process, a draft project plan, a couple of charts that provide a perspective on issues and coordination and viewpoints that we've picked up during the course of things, our planned next steps, and then I return it over to you for questions and answers, unless you have questions in the intro. If that makes sense, I'll continue on through. Page three, there's, basically, I'm using this as kind of a communication vehicle for the entire town, if anyone's watching at home. The slide deck's available with the Board of Selecting Meeting Agenda, if you'd like to look at it as you're watching now or afterwards. Basically, the town determined that it'd be beneficial to establish a strategic plan committee to help look at longer-term planning issues associated with the town. Such a plan would focus on three critical questions. What's the current status of the town, and how did we get here? Where do we want to be, and what do we want to do to maintain the attractiveness and desirability of the town, and what actions and steps are needed to be able to do that? When we talk about strategic plans, we're really talking about not something really close up, like the current operating budget. We're looking a little bit further out from a planning perspective. Year plus, three years to five years, five to 15 years, that kind of timeframe. We haven't refined exactly what horizon we're using at this point. It is a point of discussion, but it's, it is a longer-term viewpoint for strategic plans. The process to develop the plan will involve widespread community input, will gain perspectives from elected officials, businesses, town employees, and other community groups that are what we call stakeholders in the, in the community. We prepared this to give you a snapshot, and the appendices, as I said, are a little bit more detailed. So if we go over to page four, it's what I would call an executive summary of recent activities. We completed the selection process and have fielded the consulting team that's working with us. There's some details in the appendix on that. We collected a wide, wide variety of materials from the town. Plan of conservation and development, economic development plan, state-of-the-town address, every plan that we can put our hands on, we're working to get, to get it into the hands of the consultants. I know the library has a strategic plan. I know the Department of Health has a strategic plan. Some of those might be relevant, others maybe less so for strategic planning purposes, but we're trying to put our hands on everything. Sustainability plan is another one that I know that's got some reach, and affordable housing. We've integrated four new members. We started with seven members. We've added four new members in the past month or two, and they've been regularly attending the meetings. We have a regular cadence of meetings that we conduct. We did some brainstorming ahead of when the consultant even got on board to make sure the full committee was thinking in strategic terms and about the challenges and issues the town is facing and the opportunities and trade-offs that we need to be thinking about. I think I circulated that material to the three. You both, both the draft brainstorming technique and the list of strategic issues, I've shared that with you gentlemen. We've created department head listings, so we can figure out which people would be interviewed from a department head standpoint, which people on town boards and commissions would be part of the interview process. We still need to work our way through that, but that's basically what we've done. The most significant step is that we planned and conducted what we call an SPC, Strategic Planning Committee kickoff workshop. We did that Monday evening. That information is not in these slides, because I submitted the slides for this last week. Marlene's going to kind of take us through a couple of key points that came out of that workshop, and Mr. Tetra, I know you were there to kick the meeting off. We certainly appreciate that. So we'll give you just a brief update on what took place in that workshop.
Thank you, John. As John mentioned, my name is Marlene Batista, and I am the secretary for the Strategic Planning Committee. So we, as John mentioned, we had a kickoff meeting with Hauser Levine on Monday, April 30th. We had many participants there. We had our Strategic Planning Committee, we had the consultants, and we had resident observers there, as well as Mr. Tetra, who kicked off the meeting for us. Prior to the, to the workshop, we conducted a detailed document review and town overview with the consultant and the team and the SPC officers. We walked through the full project approach in a detailed and interactive fashion as to how we're going to approach the project from here on through the time that allotted. We spent significant time discussing community feedback techniques and approaches to gather data in workshops, questionnaires, interviewers. So basically, as John mentioned in the previous slide, we've sort of bucketed people into who's going to be into the, aside from the community outreach, there's going to be workshops with smaller groups, there's department heads, there's going to be stakeholder interviews, which will be more in-depth interviews, as well as the outreach for all the community, the RTM, all of those different groups. So it's a big cast, it's a big net to cast, so we've really got to try to, you know, get as many people involved as possible. And as John mentioned, we're still going through that process and narrowing that down. There was a lot of data that we have been gathering, as John mentioned, for existing plans, the information, the direction that we're going to be taking. Most of that hasn't been complete, but will, there'll be more to come as we go throughout this process. Hauser Levine strongly suggested that we brand our project to focus awareness and keep it in the forefront of people's mind, and really have a very specific brand to the strategic planning. So steps are underway to do so for that. We will coordinate and further update town officials as we get a more solidified process and as to what we're going to be calling this plan. Full communication, communication approaches will be leveraged to ensure awareness at relevant times, newspapers, announcements, social media, word of mouth, anything that, you know, we can do to ensure that we continue to keep the Strategic Planning Committee out in the forefront of the residents and the importance of it, and how we really need everybody's participation in order to really get and make this a very meaningful project. The consultants also conducted a mini workshop with us on April 30th, which sort of took us through, in less detail, what they would be conducting for the larger group workshops. So it really focused on strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, which most people know as a SWOT analysis. There was topics and trends that obviously rose out of that, but more analysis is needed as we, as we look at these trends and analysis. And the Strategic Planning Committee, obviously, we can't stress this enough, how much we'll need your support and your direction and your outreach as well, as we continue to go through this process and getting the, not only the, the residents and all the key players involved with this, but as also to get the information to the consultants in a timely fashion, so that we're being very nimble with our resources and utilizing them in the most effective way possible in order to get to the end results. So that is the update as of our 4:30 meeting, and I will turn it back over to John.
Thanks. So just moving to page five, you know, if the question comes up, what are you doing? This is to try and answer that. A picture is worth a thousand words in my mind. So what I tried to do is put on one page an illustration of all of the activities and how we're going to go through the process. So if it's okay, I'll just quickly debrief this slightly. So if you read left to right off the chart, the first set of activities is to structure the analysis, which I think Marlene and I have kind of described about document review, field reconnaissance, brainstorming, SWOT, that sort of thing. The objective is to come down to a set of issues that we need to wrestle with, with the town. As you can see at the bottom of the page, that work is well underway. The next vertical column across the page, gather constituent input. So there's a variety of techniques that the consultant is going to take us through, involving community and business workshops, do-it-yourself workshops, web questionnaires, other data gathering techniques, to gather community sentiment, a community viewpoint on what the town is experiencing, what's good, what can be approved, what would maintain the attractiveness of the town into the future. We gather additional stakeholder input through more detailed one-on-one interviews, which is the third column over, department heads, elected officials, members of boards and commissions, and other stakeholders. So they will participate in either of a number of different types of activities. A workshop with multiple people, an individual one-on-one interview, confidential interview, and possibly some other techniques, which the consultant will take us through. Where we're trying to go, over on the right-hand side of this chart, the right-hand vertical column, illustrates strengths, weaknesses, opportunity, threat analysis, look at options and trade-offs, gather feedback from the Strategic Planning Committee and other members of the town government and town officials, and come up with a report. So in one page, one picture, that's the process we're going to go through. So the next question that you might ask is, if we flip over to page six, how are you going to get there? So if we look at page six, it's a little fuzzy because of the way it was copied in here, but I can get you all a cleaner picture of this. But basically, this is our high-level, top-level project plan. Of course, there's more detailed activities under each one of these steps. Steps 1A and 1B and 2A, they're all well underway right now. That's what we're working on at the moment. Community outreach, the town will get involved in that a little bit later. We're trying to refine exactly when that would happen. Doing it in June, when school is out, or July or August, probably not the best approach. Most likely, the large community outreach events where we're broadcasting news to the community and soliciting feedback will most likely happen in the fall. That's what our intent is right now, because we think the best results. If there are pockets of groups that we think will be present here in town over the summer, we're going to tackle that challenge and get that feedback, so we're not waiting on that till later in the year. And that's about all I have to say about this chart. Basically, if we start now, probably will take about 12 months to be able to do the entire plan. It might take a little bit longer. If we're real good, it might take a little bit less, but we're working on it. Page seven and page eight are just a couple of charts that we refer to as our bubble charts. Page seven, basically, is illustrating, there's a lot going on all across the town. There's a number of entities, there are a number of initiatives, there are a number of private sector things going on. I've arrayed them around the page. The key issues that we're looking at are in the two charts, the two bubbles right above the conference table. What groups are involved in the town, and what's going on, what initiatives are underway? Coming out of that, what are the opportunities and trade-offs? My only objective to this chart is to tell you it's a complicated situation that we're in, because there are a lot of issues that are trying to be wrestled to the ground with a lot of great effort and initiatives, getting it all coordinated with a common direction, so everyone can execute the right way below that, is really one of the charges that we view is very important to the strategic planning process. Page eight, again, a bubble chart, same sort of questions. I've covered these points with you last time. I think the points that are covered around the page and each one of the bubbles resonated with you the last time you saw it. I have been in front of two or three other boards and commissions since then, many department meetings and whatever, and I'd say three-quarters of these questions came up in all of my interactions with them. So it's still a pretty good compilation of the kind of questions that are in the minds of the people, both residents and members of the town government and boards and commissions that are around town. Again, not an easy thing, because one person wants it done one way, and there might be a very rational, logical reason, and somebody else wants something else differently done. And those, that's the challenge of evaluating the trade-offs and trying to make a smart decision, not for person A or group B, but for the town overall, looking out to the Our next steps, page nine. As Marlene mentioned, we had a bunch of things that came out of the fourth, the April 30th kickoff session. We have to take each one of those, whether it's branding, interviews, whatever, push it forward and continue to make progress. Continue our planning. As I mentioned, we may revise the project plan for community outreach. We'll keep everyone informed about that. Continue to gather and review the town information to the extent we can. Conduct the framing interviews with the department heads and other people that would be more readily available, even as schools are letting out and people are taking vacations, we'll do that. Evaluate the current situation using a SWOT techniques and analysis, outline strategic issues, and then evaluate the overall project situation, looking out to the future. Certainly, continue to update all the boards and commissions. I'm kind of volunteering myself to help go around and do that. I'll be back and see you quarterly, at least, possibly more frequently, depending on where things wind up. Coordinate with town departments, officials, and groups. Your involvement and support of us getting information out of town department heads and time from them for interviews will be critical. We've talked about that, Mr. Tetra, and I know you're in full support of getting us access to the people and the information we need, so we certainly do appreciate that. As one of the other charts showed, we need to maintain our awareness of other initiatives, programs, private, public studies, economic analysis, TOD studies. It's a challenge, let's say that. And then, last, everything does not always go as planned in many things in life, so we need to adapt our approach, integrate new techniques and information as it becomes available. So we have a great, great committee. We have 11 people on it now, and I think we're all thinking strategically and trying to. We're all willing to commit our time and be involved and work with the consultant to get the town the best answer to these challenging questions. And with that, I'll go to page 10 and see if there's any questions or any additional information I can provide.
One quick comment, just thinking back to Monday night, I was very impressed with the consultants and the approach that your committee is using to community engagement. And that was been one of my concerns, I'm going to say our concerns, all the way through on this, as we've been thinking through this, to make sure that we get out of the community, we get their feedback, and in essence, get their buy-in as we go through the process, so there are no surprises to the community as we go through all that. But I was very impressed.
I can guarantee you will get their feedback. Getting their buy-in will be an achievement at an appropriate point in time that we will aspire to.
That sounds good, but again, I just want to compliment you on the, the steps that you've identified on community engagement, the approach you're using on that, and to try and get everybody involved. Any comments, questions from the board?
Oh, John, I mean, it's another fantastic, it's a complete report. You guys certainly sound like you're on the right track. I'm most impressed at how we appear to be building momentum right now at the right time, right when we're about to start searching for a community buy-in on it. So I would say keep up the good work, and thank you to both of you for all the hours you put in.
Pass that along to the full committee.
Yeah, please let them know that.
Mr. Kyle.
Yes, sir. John, thank you very much for all the work and dedication to this project, and as well as the process that you're going through. I mean, it's clear, it's concise, it's logical, and it will work. So it's, it's a good plan, the way you're approaching the challenges, and I know we're going to have a good outcome at some point. Couple of quick questions, and I want to thank you. You answered one of my questions along the way about the timing of the community outreach, because when I saw the fuzzy chart, I saw there was a chunk that looked like it was in the summer, but then there was a secondary chunk in the fall. So I was asking myself that same question about who's going to be around in July or August, so as long as you find, as long as you find out who those audiences are, that you can make use of both times without losing any momentum along the way, right?
Which is exactly what we're doing. We recognize that the community feedback would not be best accomplished during June, when people are starting for finals and planning vacations and whatever.
That's right.
Or in July and August, when residents are vacationing or whatever. So we decided to slide that, as I would say, to the right, and accomplish pockets of it where we can, so.
Right, right. And a couple of things on HLA. I spent some time on their website. They were a very impressive firm. If you look at the list of projects that they've done, big ones in Chicago and a whole bunch of, you know, good-sized, midwestern cities and elsewhere. I recognized that branding thing, just looking at their website, and I think it's important, because some of those, some of those projects that they worked on had some kind of creative, eye-catching names that drew people, at least drew my eyes to them, to drill in and kind of see what they did, how they did it, how they improved the town, and they were quite impressive, and I think the marketing of what you're doing is something that shouldn't be lost upon this town.
You catch the mind share by the sizzle before you serve the steak. So we're trying to capture people's attention with that technique. Some people might view branding as inconsequential. It can be very powerful and very important to do, and it's, if you think about it and you plan how you develop it, it's relatively, I won't say easy thing to do, but not a long, lengthy, difficult process, and can really have high impact, so, thank you.
Yeah, I completely agree. Catching people's eyes and attention up front is important. Quickly on HLA, I know it's early and you probably don't have this answer, but they're a very successful firm, and they've done some big projects. Is there any early thought or concern that, you know, at some point in time, they might outgrow our project or our budget, if it creeps or stretches out, or it gets a little bigger in different directions? Have you guys, I'm, I'm sure you've thought about that.
I don't think they'll outgrow it. Our contractual arrangement with them is to deliver a strategic plan. It's not a time-based thing. We have to meet their needs for information and planning and conduct of workshops and that sort of things, and I'm very confident they'll meet their requirements under contract for getting us through the process. I know, Mr. Tetra, they've worked with MetroCOS in the past. I don't know if you were detailing involved with them with that, but you'll see in the backup charts here why we selected them, and one of those points is exactly the one that you're making. They're bringing ideas and information and approaches from outside the community, yet they have experience in Fairfield County, both through MetroCOS and through doing POCD work in Greenwich right now. So I think we thought, besides the fact they were very impressive from an overall standpoint, those two elements made them a really good those two elements made them a really good fit for what we were trying to do.
Yeah, and I meant not outgrow us as a town, but outgrow the budget or the contract if things were to, you know, take more time or...
There's two sides to that arrangement. I'm going to do my best to manage them to what they deliver and give them, and stay within the scope, not wander away and get into extraneous things, which can happen, but we'll do our best to manage. We have a number of very experienced people on the committee that have this as experience in their professional career, so I think we'll be able to manage our way through that effectively. But it is, it is a point of risk and exposure, but I think we're going to do our best to manage it.
Good. And lastly, in one of the appendices, I was a little surprised that only them and one other firm came to give an oral presentation. The other ones were all just submitted paperweight?
Everyone would have, we had eight responses to the RFP, and they were all interesting. Everyone had some other different elements. There were several things that made those two firms, the two that we brought in for oral presentations, stand out, their community engagement, some of their experience and projects they've done. So we thought they were the best. If we had interviewed both of them and it didn't go well and we didn't like them, we might have went back and looked at one of the other firms. But when we unanimously selected those two firms to come in for oral interviews, and we unanimously selected HLA to be the firm that, so it was pretty much, you know, several of the other firms really couldn't demonstrate that they had done this type of work. They had proposed it, they had aspects of it, they had interesting techniques for some components of it, but they didn't have every element of it that we were looking for.
Okay, and just to clarify, it was the committee that chose the two to come in to present? It wasn't the, it wasn't the other six saying, "We don't want to come to you and present"?
That's correct. Our interaction with them was we issued the RFP, they responded, we evaluated a variety. We had seven or eight component point of evaluation that Mr. Foley from purchasing took us through, and the firms, you know, that we interviewed rose to the top. And the other ones were wonderful firms, interesting. I could consider using them for something else, but it was, hmm, these two firms really stand out, and that's what we want with.
Thank you.
All right. Unless there's any questions?
Nope.
Thank you very much. Good luck to your committee. We look forward to seeing you in probably a July timeframe.
Okay, if not sooner. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, next up, from the Director of Community and Economic Development to hear a presentation on the town's business recruitment strategy and marketing campaign. Mr. Barnhart, fill us in.
I know this has been postponed a few times because of climate weather and other issues getting revised, so you'll note that the presentation is dated January 3, and that's because this is a presentation I delivered to about two dozen of our business leaders, civic leaders, core property, key property owners, commercial developers, and brokers in order to gain their support for our initiative that's going forward. So as you know, we did an economic development plan this year or so ago with the Economic Development Commission. This is one of the action steps that was identified, and the commission is moving forward on that, on that basis. Really, I won't go through all these slides because I know your time is very valuable. We have other things on your agenda, but I will touch on the highlights here. Our objective, as we start out with, is looking at ways in which we can further grow the town's grand list. And part of that, we understand from surveys of business executives and leaders, that many of them get their information in terms of initial search if they're looking for new locations from websites. That's a very effective marketing tool, and frankly, from our perspective, our website doesn't serve that role at the present time. So we wanted to make sure that we would upgrade the economic development portion of the town's website that would serve as a marketing tool to these business leaders that are looking for potential new location. That's not to say we will continue to focus on business retention, working with our existing business community because it's the old 80/20 rule. You had most of your leads and most of your business development activity from your existing business base, and that will continue. We'll also be working on our small business creation and working on entrepreneurship initiatives. We're not ignoring those. This is really focused on an element that we haven't had on our portfolio, which is business recruitment, business attraction. We've always had a reactionary role for the most part with respect to that. So this will be more forward-leaning. We'll have this new website that we're looking to use as a marketing tool. The positioning is aimed at the new generation of business leaders. It's not going to ignore the existing folks that are in different, different age demographics, but certainly we want to make sure that we're pitching to the new generation of business leaders. It will include a lot of imagery and video testimonials from existing business leaders, and it'll be, serve as a platform for our future marketing campaigns. This overall initiative will be something that we're going to enlist others in support of this effort, not just other town departments, the Economic Development Commission, all of you on this board, and business leaders as well, but we'll also be asking for help from our resident and business base. We're in the midst of going through in terms of implementation. We have selected a firm. We're in the midst of developing, actually, we're in testing and review. We anticipate a new launch of the website within the next couple of weeks. And from that, then, we will then move into an outbound marketing campaign. I won't dwell on slide number three with the exception that I just want to point out that what we're focused on are knowledge-based businesses, and for one critical reason, that's where the growth is, and that tends to deliver the high-quality, high-paying jobs that we need to support the exceptional quality of life that Fairfield has to offer, our top-notch schools and public services. So that's what we're focused on. Moving on to slide four, we did take a look at our demographic profile. We do fair, pretty well relative to our cohorts in terms of the number of folks with advanced and bachelors and advanced degrees. We have a key metric in terms of the number of folks that are in business, management occupations, or in finance, mathematics, and applied sciences and the like. And that compares pretty well compared to, that compares fairly well to New York, the immediate area, the region, as well as we took an average college-town cohort just to, for comparison's sake. I think one of the things that is important to remember, for Fairfield, we're a pretty good-sized community in the state at 31 square miles, but in most parts of the country, that would be a neighborhood, a much larger metropolitan area. And so what we want to make sure that people understand, particularly those that are coming from out of state, is that they have the talent that they can attract, that they can, a talent pool that they can draw from, which is much larger than the town's population as a whole. So within a 25-minute drive, you have over half million in population. You can see some of the statistics in terms of those folks that are in those key business There is this chart in terms of what millennials are looking for. I won't dwell on that. It's interesting. It came from National Publication. But in terms of looking at our office, current office inventory, we have a number of spaces that are available, low vacancy rates, as Mr. Tepstra was pointing out in the past. We don't have a lot of large block space available. But yet, if you go further down county, there are significant vacancies in the Stanford Central Business Core, and one of the issues that we're wrestling with is, you know, how to create incentive to create additional supply when there's not enough demand to support, to create negative or positive absorption in lower Fairfield County. So in terms of informing our strategy, we're looking at businesses in those knowledge-based fields. These are the types of industries that we're looking for, small to medium-sized companies for the most part that might be able to currently occupy some of our existing office space that's available. Again, looking at those that are not necessarily startups. We can work with existing startups locally, but we're looking for those with a proven business model that are looking to relocate. And we're focused on the immediate geographical area. We're not looking to recruit companies from the southeast or southwest. We're looking at the immediate area where we have a competitive cost advantage like New York, Westchester County, even northern New Jersey, Massachusetts perhaps. A key question all business leaders ask is, "Where can I find talent? How do I, how do I find and retain the best people?" And we think we need to be able to respond positively to that question, and we think we can based on the information we're going to provide. There is a tremendous opportunity for us to define this here. When we did a quick search, looking at best towns for business in Connecticut, there's not that much that comes up. So a little search engine optimization, we feel that we can come to the top of the list. Again, the overall strategy is if we want to start, if we want our, end objective is to increase the grand list by recruiting those types of businesses to Fairfield. It's a domino effect. We're using the website and an aggressive digital marketing campaign to recruit those businesses here. This will help spur demand for new office product, new office space, which will, in the end, generate that interest from the development community and respond to that demand. In terms of competitive positioning, we think the key differentiator in our market, what sets us apart is the fact we have two universities in our own backyard. We need to continue to do a better job in terms of leveraging that talent, but we have worked, and part of my initial outreach was working with both universities to make sure they were comfortable with the presentation that I'm presenting to you today. Again, just an overview on page 16. Our, our objective is to sell our unique advantage within this marketplace, use more imagery to tell a story that's compelling, that hopefully will engage the customer and prompt them to respond to a call-to-action request for their information. We'll be using video testimonials from our key business leaders to help tell that story, as well as information from both universities. We're working to develop additional folks that will serve as business ambassadors, including some of the business leaders that we've talked to, to work with some of those incoming businesses to address their issues or questions they may have in terms of relocation and the Fairfield Business Committee. The site will be mobile-responsive and optimized for search. And again, we'll build on the website in terms of our next focus, which is the outbound marketing campaign, which will build on those assets and put out further information that people can then respond to. Just a little bit of information, we did select a Fairfield firm to work with us, a branding specialist that worked with a number of blue-chip clients. Those are listed here as well. We're very happy to be partnering with the Fairfield Business to do this work. And again, I'll be happy to provide a further update in the coming, whenever you deem appropriate, but certainly in the next few weeks, we'll be anticipating a launch of the site and looking for your feedback and support. So thank you.
Good. Mark, thank you. Any comments, questions from the board?
Yeah, I, yeah, Mark. Thank you for the update. One thing did catch my ear. You mentioned, I understand the regionalization of Fairfield versus Massachusetts and our surrounding states, and the fact that we stack up economically better than some of them. But what is the rationale for not looking, at least now, further out? I think I heard you say that you're going to concentrate on the northeast, if you will, and not look at, you know, whether it's Austin, Texas, or California, or some other place. What are your thoughts on that?
Our thought is that this is, these are the folks that are most likely to relocate. One of the, one of the advantages of the investment we've made to date, both in terms of the website platform and the marketing campaign that we plan on, is that it's certainly nimble enough and responsive enough to respond to what we're hearing back from the marketplace. But in terms of resource allocation, we think it's better that it's more precisely targeted to businesses that are more likely to actually respond to that call to action. And so that's typically where those decisions are made anyway, in terms of where we see companies, those prospects coming from. But again, as we go forward and hear back from folks, we're certainly able to adjust accordingly.
I understand it's typical, I'm just trying to think out loud here. It seems like, you know, the northeast, we're going to be more familiar to northeastern-type companies and easier to reach, and I think that makes sense as maybe the first subset or whatever, but it just, it just seems to me that we should also, you know, not always wait for the input from the other 46 states, if you will, but be more, be more proactive outbound? Is that, is it too soon to do that, in your opinion?
No, I think, I would rather target it precisely to those companies we think are the most attractive leads for us and allocate resources there. And I think the better, the better leads or the better prospects are going to come from close to rent. Now, that's not to say that we should ignore any other potential outside of that realm. We're certainly able to do that, but I think we want to focus initially, at least on those that we feel are the, are the best prospects that are likely to respond to this specific call.
Thanks.
Mr. Timmy?
I'll say thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you. Look forward to hearing more and certainly look forward to seeing the new website when it's up and operational.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, next item up on the agenda is item number eight, which is the Roger Sherman Elementary School Building Committee charge. And this is to consider and approve a charge from the Roger Sherman Elementary School Building Committee. May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
A second.
Second.
Now, just to set this up, we actually reviewed this at our last meeting to give everybody time to see it and offer any thoughts or suggestions on it. I've got a couple, but I don't mean to go first if someone else has some thoughts.
No, go ahead. I have a couple minor things, but go ahead.
All right, so it's, you know, we pulled this together from some other building committee charges to make sure that we were included, everything, and also had some tried and true wording, if you will. I think there are a couple of things on here that I would look at us taking a more detailed look at, possibly a couple of tweaks. In the one, two, three, fourth paragraph, it says, "The RSB shall only seek state aid reimbursement for the project if state regulations would not cause additional costs for this project to exceed the value of any state aid reimbursement or to trigger flood regulations would significantly delay the project." Certainly, I think everybody would agree with that as a, as a concept. I think that I would really prefer that the building committee report back to the Board of Selectmen for our review and approval on the decision, and kind of where I'm going on that is that we may decide that the reimbursement is worthwhile getting, and we should eliminate one segment of the project to not do that because it's financially, we might find another way to do that project, but we don't want to give up potentially two, ten percent, 600,000 or so in state aid.
I agree with that. It sounds good. I'd love to have the option, come back for us for analization discussion and the vote.
Okay, so with the board's permission, let me suggest that, that we add as a last sentence there, "The Board of Selectmen requests the Building Committee come back to the board for a review and approval of any decision prior to its, any reimbursement decision prior to its being made."
I'll second that. Oh, was that a motion? I'm sorry.
Yes, that was a motion.
Second.
And any, that was my first draft of the word.
You want me to read it one more time?
Thank you.
I was writing it down, and then, then...
I jumped on, yes, sir.
You jumped on a second.
"The Board of Selectmen requests the Building Committee come back to the board for review and approval prior to any final decision being made." Sheila, did I get that right?
Reimbursement decision.
Mr. Dryer?
Reimbursement.
Sorry?
You say any decision...
Reimbursement decision being made. Thank you very much. That certainly was the intent.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Is that okay? Sheila, you've got that, so we can include that?
Mm-hmm.
Do you want to read it back before I?
Sheila, can you read it back?
Yeah, let's see. "The Board of Selectmen requests the Building Committee come back to the board for a review and approval prior to any final reimbursement decisions being made."
So that's, that's what's, that's the amendment before us. Any further comments on the amendment? Any comments from the public on the amendment and the amendment only, please? Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor?
All right.
So the item as amended stands before us. The only other comment I had because of a question came up when we were doing Holland Hill, that in some areas, the building committee said they went beyond the ed spec. And I would think that it would make sense to put something in it. We know we have a dollar cap, but it also seems to me that, that we put in a comment here that, that the building committee should not exceed the ed spec without prior approval from the Board of Selectmen.
Sure.
And I wasn't quite sure... And I wasn't quite sure where to do that other than maybe as a sentence, the last sentence on the second paragraph?
Paragraph two.
The Board of Selectmen directs the building committee not to exceed the ed spec in any area without prior approval from the Board of Selectmen. Again, I don't think that's going to necessarily be a major issue here because there's a strict dollar amount, but I would hate to see us exceed the ed spec in certain areas, stop the project because of the dollar amount cap, and realize that we couldn't, we didn't get some things done that we might have because we went beyond the ed spec. So I think that's the only...
I'll second that.
All right, so that item is before us. Any further comment? Sheila, do you have that down?
Yes, the Board of Selectmen directs the building committee not to exceed the ed spec in any area without prior approval from the Board of Selectmen.
Correct. That's what I think I said. Any comments from the public? All right, hearing none, back to the board. All in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
Okay, so the charge as amended is before us. Any further comments, suggestions?
Just a couple of quick ones. On paragraph one, two, three, four, five, six, at the bottom of page one, considering all the potential complications, where it says the committee shall report to the Board of Selectmen through the Office of the First Selectmen, could we just make it a little more defined? Report to the Board of Selectmen, comment quarterly or more often, just so we know we're going to see them once a quarter, so it doesn't get away?
Yes, my concern is whether we, it's been my observation that, in fact, the most of the review is needed and helpful to the building committee up through the process where it goes out to bid. Once it goes out to bid and we finally signed off on the dollar amounts, generally, that's not where things get out of scope, we're out of hand. So I think it's most important that we get kind of quarterly reviews up until the dollar amounts finalized and approved. During the construction process, I'm not sure that's as important, but that would be my comment, but I'm open to...
That's a fine compromise. I just want to make the point that we want to have good, ongoing, consistent contact with the committee, whether we put something in here or modify it or don't. I think it's a point worth making.
Yep. Mr. Timniak, do you have any thoughts on that? You want quarterly for the whole thing?
I would not like to have quarterly. I'd like to have, like, come back when requested or something like that, you know?
That's fine as well, as long as we have the opportunity to get the committee in front of us, at least that first year or so, right?
Here's what our guideline has been, and we've tried to do it with Holland Hill and the Strategic Planning Committee, is have them come back during the kind of the design phase. Because I think if we look at some projects, and let me pick on Ludlow again, just because they're not here, some things seem to get out of joint on that. And I think that a lot of that happened during the design phase. By the time we got the dollar amounts before us, all those decisions were made. So as much as in some cases, we may have felt like, hey, that we didn't get a chance to comment on that, because by the time it came before us, it was too late. If we'd heard that all the way through, we could either have raised our issues or agreed to it as it went through, so it wasn't like we got caught by surprise. I guess that's what I'm trying to avoid.
Well, what I'm trying to avoid is having a quarterly and then a decision's made right after that, and we don't have them come back for another quarter, and then we miss the window.
That's a fair point, too.
That's fair. All right, so why don't we phrase that...
You could just make it, "Report to the Board of Selectmen after requested to Board of Selectmen," or something?
Three, four, five, six, that the committee shall report to the Board of Selectmen through the Office of the First Selectmen. should come, you know, prior to key milestone decisions. And as requested.
Yeah, that's good. Perfect.
All right, that's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
So the item, charge as amended is before us. Sheila, did you get that okay?
Yeah, that was at the end of paragraph six that was.
Right, right there. Voted on that amendment, correct? So the item as amended is before us. Any final comments from the public on the charge as amended? Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that is done. And just as a quick update, we have collected a number of names. We'll start interviewing folks. I will ask Kathleen to get those names and resumes out to the both of you, so you can also follow up as we go through this.
Great, thank you.
Next item up is from the tax collector. To consider and act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector in the amount of $121,268.38, may I have a motion to accept?
Yes.
A second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's been done. Next up is we have a private executive session pending litigation with the town attorney. I ask Attorney Lottie to join us, and I ask everybody else to leave at the moment.
Can you state what this is regarding to?
I cannot at the moment.